Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting of July 12th being called to order. We're starting a little later today at 7:09 PM. Normally, our meetings start at 6:00, but we have an official ceremony that'll take place at 8:00 PM with the reorganization of City Council. We do have some council business to take care of before that. And with that, I would like to ask the city clerk to read the roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian, Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian.
Here. I'd like to invite up Chief Lanzus to lead us in the flag salute, our fire chief, Sylvia Lanzus. Please rise.
Good evening. Please stand, cover your heart, repeat, and join me in slaying the flag of the greatest country on this earth. Ready? Begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the invocation.
Father, we come before you this evening with gratitude in our hearts for this great city of Glendale. Today, we welcome new and returning council members, city treasurer, and the new city clerk. May you give the mayor, city council, city leaders, and staff wisdom so that they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. May our community be known for its justice. Let it always prosper from the influence of good men and women. We pray for all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
We have the report of the city clerk.
The agenda for the July 12th, 2022 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on July 7th, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. And presentation and appointments, may we have item 3A read into the record?
Mayor, it will be item 3B. We will no longer read item 3A into the record.
Oh, that's right. Now, do we have to procedurally remove it, or does it stay on the agenda as a reminder and a relic of our past? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. That's right. We had made that decision. So let's move on to 3B, which is?
Parks and Recreation's Month Proclamation.
All right. And by the way, for anyone who does want to know what is in store for the forthcoming agenda, you can always view it online on www.glendalca.gov under the tab for agendas. So let us now read the Parks and Recreation Month Proclamation. Whereas parks and let's have some of our park staff. I noticed we have park staff here. Please come up. Mr. Bulanikian, is he here with us? Who do we have here? Come on up. Patty, how are you? All right. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the city of Glendale, and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities. And whereas even though a pandemic, even through a pandemic, local parks, virtual recreation, trails, open space, and human services remained accessible to our community. And whereas throughout the city of Glendale, we are fortunate to have 47 beautiful park recreation and special use facilities, including 286 acres of developed parkland and over 5,000 acres of open space, a new nature center, and a wide variety of outdoor recreation opportunities for its citizens and visitors. Whereas the Community Services and Parks Department promotes physical, emotional, mental health and wellness, and offers an array of opportunities to go outside, create memorable experiences, and play through fitness classes, sports, and recreation programs, cultural events, lifelong learning classes, and parks, trails, and facilities for fitness and sports activities for all age groups and abilities. And whereas the Community Services and Parks Department also provides programs to address the basic human service needs of its residents, including senior nutritional meals, and case management, youth and family outreach, information and referral, youth employment and youth life skills training, homeless case management, prevention and housing, and job training programs. And you all thought it was just parks, right? And whereas the Community Services and Parks Department strengthens community safety and security and reduces juvenile crime while fostering youth development and growth into productive adults through an array of after-school and seasonal programs. And whereas the strength of Glendale is increased through the integrational recreation programs and events for all ages that allow people to play and grow together while providing the opportunity for residents to lead balanced, rewarding, and healthy lives. And whereas the Community Services and Parks Department remains versatile and innovative in providing vital services to our community, now therefore I, Ardashez Kasakian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month in Glendale, and call on all our citizens to celebrate by participating in recreation activities and community services and spending time in our community parks. Parks do make our life better. And if you are in the audience and you have ever enjoyed any of our wonderful parks in our city, give these folks a big round of applause for everything that they Do any of my colleagues want to say anything before we turn it over to our park staff?
Just that you do a fabulous job. I know that you are making a lot of people happy here in the community, especially our kids, with all of your sports programs and other support systems that you have and programs that you have, the swimming and all of those. And just do a wonderful job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, then. Let's go down and present. Well, let me come down and give this to you, and you say a few words.
Okay. Mayor Kasakian, council members, city staff, my name is Patty Bencourt with Community Services and Parks Department. And on behalf of the entire department, I want to thank you for recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. We're in full swing of our summer programs, aquatics, trails, and open space. We have day camps of a variety of different locations. We have concerts in the parks. They're about to start on the plaza on Thursdays. And we just want to invite everyone to get out and enjoy the green space. Parks do make life better. So you could stroll through a park, or ride your bike, take a walk, but just get out and enjoy the parks. I also wanted to take the time to invite everyone out to Cruise Night this Saturday. It's the 27th Annual Cruise Night. It's going to be held on Brand Boulevard in downtown Glendale. It's presented by the Downtown Greater Association as well as the Alex Theater. We're going to have Smooth, The Sounds of Santana, on the main stage at Milford and Brand, as well as Turn the Page, a Bob Seger tribute band. And headlining this year is Surfing, a Beach Boys tribute band. We're also going to have an area for youth with crafts and games. We also are going to have over 350 classic muscle cars, hot rods, and new this year, import and modified cars, too. And then to finish the show by our Economic Development Department, we're going to have a fireworks show at 10:30 to end the show. So come out and enjoy Cruise Night. It should be a fun event.
Awesome.
Great. Yeah, I have a question because I thought I read on the marketing that you're encouraging people to wear Hawaiian shirts.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So don't forget to wear your favorite luau gear. It's going to be the coolest luau in Glendale. So come out.
All right.
Aloha.
This is an event that is a marquee event for the city. We're all excited about it. We're all excited that concerts are back in the park. And for those who need a reminder, even though Patty said it, we are introducing concerts in our plaza here at City Hall. We have a wonderful plaza. There have been numerous gatherings here. There were a lot of rallies over the last few years. It's an excellent space. Once the sun goes down, there's plenty of shade. And I think acoustically, hopefully, it'll be great for folks to come out and enjoy some live music in this wonderful Southern California summer evening weather that we have. And by the way, I got to tell you that from a personal perspective, my son has been participating in the Wilderness Camp up at Ducommunion, and he loves it. You are all doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Worth every penny that we were able to spend on making that happen. Thank you very much.
Did he catch any raccoons or anything up there?
No, 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 but they did learn how to make a natural, non-toxic bug repellent.
There you go.
And he was telling me about it. Seven years old, and he's already going off on Yuko Littis oil and whatnot. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's give you another big round of applause. Good job.[975.23][975.23][applause] Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next item is consent items, including minutes to following our routine. That may be acted upon one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay, 4G has been pulled.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Let's have roll call for the consent items.
Councilmember Agajian, Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian.
Yes. And let's have 4G read into the record.
Public Works Regarding Cal Recycle Beverage Container Recycling and Senate Bill 1383, Local Assistant Grant, One Resolution of Appropriation in Amount of $338,838 for the Senate Bill 1383, Local Assistant Grant Project, and Cal Recycle Grant Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Project.
Thank you. Okay, well, the reason I pulled this item is because a part of it goes, Senate Bill 1383, goes to funding recycling pails for our kitchens. And I was not aware of this. And so I would like for staff to let the public know about these pails and how we can get them for composting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Devine. This is a great program that we're rolling out in several different phases. We are delivering these pails, which can be used to store your organics with the new containers or bins or cans that we're replacing. And because we're doing it in different phases, we're not going to get to everybody all at the same time. However, if anybody is interested in getting these, they can call our call center at 818-548-3916 and request a pail, and then they can come and pick it up.
Or they can go to 548 West Chevy Chase and pick one up themselves, right?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. So I hope everybody out there, I don't know how many we have on hand, but.
We should have enough.
Oh, good. Okay. So go on down and pick up your pails. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the item.
All right, thank you. All right. We have a motion on a second on 4G. Let's have roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian, Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian.
Yes. Thank you. And thank you for highlighting some attention to that issue, Councilmember Devine. Next is City Council and Staff Comments. Before I turn to my colleagues, does staff have any comments?
No, Mayor Kasakian. Thank you.
We do want to make one announcement about the agenda items this evening, though, right? One item is being taken off calendar?
Yes. Mayor Kasakian, item 8A, action item 8A regarding Vision Zero has been postponed to the meeting, council meeting of July 19th.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager Galanian. Again, item 8A, which was the Community Development Department presenting on Vision Zero, the introduction and update report that is being moved. So if anyone is here for that, just be aware that we will not be discussing that this evening. We felt that it deserves a full meeting for us to get the full sense of the report and make any comments and recommendations. With that, I'll turn to my colleagues, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate Councilmember Najarian. He became the new Chair of Metro's Board of Directors. And is there a rumor that you're throwing out the ball at Dodger Stadium?
One of these days, we'll be throwing it out at Dodger Stadium. I think it's on August 9th.
All right. Okay.
That's what they promised me. But you know how these sports teams are. They'll trade me before the game starts, probably.
Just keep practicing, would you? So at least the ball gets to home plate. Okay. Secondly, I wanted to express my deep condolences to our Japanese community over the death of former Prime Minister Abe. I know it's a deep loss for that community and shocking as well. Then I'd like to, I do have an appointee position on Transportation and Parking Commission, and I'm going to nominate Andre Ortebegian. He's well-known in our community. I've always felt that he's from the Montrose area or has business in the Montrose area. And I've always felt that they need some representation on commissions. So I'm going to be submitting his name for the TPC appointment. And lastly, in light of recent developments in our discussions with Sunrun regarding our Glendale Virtual Solar Plant, I would like and ask for one of my council members to second the motion. I'd like to request that staff provide a report regarding the possibility of our city developing our own virtual power plant program. We would own the electricity that's provided, and we would not have to be concerned about transmission. So I'd like to have a second from one of my colleagues to look into the future of this program.
I'd be happy to second that. I think that I have some comments as well, and we could combine those, I think, for a future agenda report. So I'd be happy to second that.
Thank you. Thank you. And that concludes my.
Okay. Yes, I was also going to congratulate Councilmember Najarian for becoming the next Metro Board Chair. I think it's a big deal for us. We have high expectations that you're going to bring it home. You going to do that?
I promise.
Okay. We need a one-seat ride to downtown LA.
We can do that.
Okay.
My speech.
Okay, good. Good, good, good. The other thing is, and Mr. Imroni, sorry, I'm kind of blindsiding you, but I think it's okay. I read in the City Manager's Weekly Report about an award to electrify the Beeline, a grant of $34.6 million. I was hoping you could maybe say a thing or two about it because it's pretty incredible. I didn't know this was coming, but I think it's worth people knowing what we've got. It's a big deal. So I think that's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much.
I was hoping he could maybe give us a little synopsis.
Sure. Thank you very much, Councilmember Brotman, members of City Council. This was a grant that our Beeline staff worked very hard to put together during the, it was due in March, and it was for, as you mentioned, a grant to electrify our, to buy several electric buses, to install electric chargers. And it's a very, very tough grant to get, actually, through Caltrans. And we were able to secure it to the tune of $34.6 million. We are going to go, Caltrans is going to submit these to the California Transportation Commission next for appropriations in October. And we are hoping to be able to move forward with implementing some of the projects, including purchasing of the buses and the chargers. And we're also looking to build a new parking deck to expand our capabilities for storing the electric buses. So we're quite excited about that. We're working on a press release with the City Manager's Office, and we look forward to moving forward on that.
Okay. I hope I didn't jump the gun on that. But you say several buses, but I'm reading 20.
Twenty buses.
Battery electric buses. Before this, we were planning on five, and now that's up to 20. So that's pretty amazing.
Yes. Excellent work. Thank you very much for that update, and thank you for bringing that issue again to be highlighted. Councilmember Brotman, Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a late entry here that I was just made aware of. I want to announce that the city of Glendale is sponsoring a Los Angeles Galaxy Night Saturday, August 13th at 7:00 PM at the Dignity Health Sports Park, where the LA Galaxy will take on the Vancouver Whitecaps. Tickets are $25 per person. There are no taxes, no additional fees. And to purchase tickets, contact Hurek Hyropetian at 818-550-4320. The deadline to purchase the tickets, however, is July 15th, which is Sunday, perhaps, Friday, which is this Friday. So please, if you're interested, LA Galaxy Night, 818-550-4320. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. I also want to express my deep and heartfelt condolences to the people of Japan over the assassination of former Prime Minister Shinzo Abe. City Manager Galanian and I visited the consulate of Japan to sign the memorial book and pass along our message of condolences from all of the council and the people of Glendale to the people of Japan with whom this city has had longstanding relationships with our tea house at Brand Park, the fact that we have now an annual cherry blossom festival where we celebrate the Japanese culture, and not the least of which is remembering that our city's only Medal of Honor recipient was a Japanese-American young man who fought with the 442nd Gopher Broke Spud Munamori. So again, heartfelt condolences. I want to commend you on the nomination of Mr. Ortebegian. I think he'll be an excellent addition. And you're right, he's been very involved in the community up in Montrose, in the Montrose Shopping Park. And speaking of which, I want to congratulate CB Fireworks on another excellent July 4th program that was very well attended. I think people showed up in record numbers to celebrate the birth of our nation. And the July 4th fireworks were spectacular. So congratulations to them. And we'll be recognizing the individuals who put it together at a later meeting. I have just two quick items. They're not really quick, but I'll try to make them quick. One is, I'd like to ask one of my colleagues to second the idea that was brought up by a resident, and I think it's an interesting idea, to have and nominate or create a poet laureate for the city of Glendale. Some other cities have this. Cities like West Hollywood, El Segundo, Altadena, and many others have a poet laureate. We have many talented writers in our community. We have many talented poets. What this would be would be a poet who is selected on an annual basis for a one-year period, who would receive a small grant. In some cities, it's about $1,500. Other cities, I think, make it as high as $2,500. This person would participate in a number of cultural events, but one of their tasks would be also to, for the duration that they are the poet laureate, to write a poem about what Glendale represents and what the city of Glendale is about. Perhaps on an evening like this, when we're having a reorganization and reminding ourselves of the social contract we enter into with our neighbors, we can perhaps have that poem read as it's done during the presidential inaugurations, when there's a poem read to the whole nation. I think it's an interesting and novel idea and worth considering. And I'd like to ask one of my colleagues to second that, and we can have staff looking into how to make it in actuality.
I think it's a lovely idea. I'll second that.
Thank you very much. In terms of environmental issues and sustainability, I would like to agendize a resolution, a draft resolution, that some folks in the community have come together to work on and have crafted. how to make it an actuality.
I think it's a lovely idea. I'll second that.
Thank you very much. In terms of environmental issues and sustainability, I would like to agendize a resolution, a draft resolution, that some folks in the community have come together to work on and have crafted something that I think will help put us on, continue, keep us on the path towards a sustainable future for Glendale, a more environmentally friendly and clean future. I'd like to agendize this resolution that will help meet our energy needs with local clean energy, make Glendale an energy and climate leader, and help us achieve a 100% clean energy future, primarily by accelerating rooftop solar and energy storage, as Councilmember Devine mentioned. This resolution sets out background on climate change impacts and risks, the status of Glendale's energy plans and GWP customer solar installations, and the potential to meet our energy needs with solar and energy storage at customer sites. It acknowledges that increasing customer adoption of solar and storage will provide numerous benefits, including economic health and environmental benefits, and includes the following provisions. It expresses, we would express the city's intent to maximize the use of clean renewable energy with the goal of achieving, and this is a reach goal, 100% clean energy by no later than 2035, if possible. It states that it is a city policy to reach the goal of at least 10% customer adoption of solar and energy storage, and together with other demand management strategies to achieve a minimum of 100 megawatts of distributed local clean energy capacity. It would direct staff to engage a consultant to develop a plan to reach these solar storage and demand management goals, including cost-benefit analysis of the plan, and for establish a subcommittee of City Council to work with staff to oversee and review the consultant work. And it includes a number of other details, but I think these are all reasonable goals. Again, I'm not the first to propose this. This is combining a lot of ideas, as you heard today from Councilmember Devine, as the work that's been previously done and recommended. But I think it will help provide us officially, I think the public will realize that with the adoption of such a resolution, that we are recommitting ourselves to these goals, and we can have a robust discussion as to how to meet them. So I'd like to ask one of my colleagues to possibly.
I just have a question. Was there something on there about a subcommittee with the council members on it?
Yes, as a part of a discussion.
Yes. I'll second that.
Thank you. We can discuss the details when it comes back from staff, and I'll hand this to the manager. There you go. And that is all for me. What is item five on the agenda?
Mayor Kasakian, the next item is six community event announcement, three-minute portions. You do have three cards in front of you, and I do have one caller.
Sure. Now, are these cards for the actual event announcements? Are they three-minute cards, or are they?
Three-minute cards.
Okay. All right. Then let's go with individuals who are actually in chambers because they made the trip down here, and then we'll go to our caller, who's watching us hopefully from the comfort of his or her home. First person to address the council will be Edik Sarkisian. Edik?
Hello, your neighbor. So can I go as well?
Siranush Ruzyan, you may go first, yes. And you'll have three minutes.
All right. Several of us here to complain about 1412 Cleveland Road, where they are in a, this is an R1 residential zone. They are running a home healthcare. We have complained to neighborhood services. It seems like they are operating without any permits. And we find syringes, masks used, thrown on the street every other night, ambulance pulls up. A lot of times, they park in front of my house, and they roll down the patients. We understand and sympathize for families that they want their elderly people to be in a home environment. But this is a residential zone. It is not a hospital zone. We had a person who passed away from COVID in that house, and I don't want my kids to be exposed to it. They have people with Sundown Syndrome. For those who do not know what that is, they start screaming at night. Walking the dog, my dog goes crazy. We don't know if they're beating up people, they're abusing them, or it's a problem. This is a major problem. Couple of years ago, Councilmember Paula, you visited our house because we were penalized for having amazing Christmas decorations. We were fined. She showed up. She said, "Thank you for bringing joy to our neighborhood." But this is unacceptable. Two houses were sold, one next to them and one across from them. The guy who sold the house across from them, because they did not notify that there is such facility, they are reselling the house. Unacceptable.
Thank you, Ms. Ruzyan. Edik Sarkisian.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. I just want to continue on Mr. Rosimian's. I am the house partially across from this property, and I've rented my house. I live now in Montrose area, and, but I'm back to kind of do some construction. And while I'm there on Saturdays, there's constantly fire department trucks, there are ambulances, there's healthcare cars coming and going. And this was a very beautiful, peaceful residential neighborhood. It has become kind of a business zone. And I also, I'm renting my house, so I'm not sure if the next renter would want to be across from kind of a home health facility. We don't know what kind of, of course, we are sympathizing with the patients. This is not about the patients, but it's about the business owner opening a business in a residential neighborhood. So we would appreciate if this could be looked into, and if, all we are trying to find out if this is within City of Glendale rules and regulations, and how would that basically be allowed without any resident being notified. Thank you.
I have a question.
Councilmember Devine?
Are these ambulances that are rolling up, are they private ambulances? They are the city ambulances, aren't they?
There are fire trucks. City ambulance, private, private as well. I saw a lot of fire trucks the other day.
We actually have images that private ambulances pulling up. They officially are advertising this facility on the Armenian Channel, and I have videotape of it.
Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. Not to start a discussion, but I do believe that there's a state law which permits congregant care within a single-family residential zone without any discretion on the part of the city. I'm not saying that's the answer, but I believe there's some law to that nature which.
With all due respect for all the laws, if I want to start construction, my neighbors are notified, and they need to know about this. None of us were notified.
I said, I don't want to start a discussion, but I believe there's a state ordinance to that effect.
Our office and staff can take a look at it and see what.
Ms. Ruzyan and Mr. Sarkisian, if you can receive contact information of how to reach the city attorney's office.
Okay.
They will communicate with you. I don't know if we'll have the answer, but we'll definitely try to get it to you and see what can be done.
Any assistance will be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Myers.
So I have a problem, and I don't know where to go. A little bit about me. My name is James Myers, M-Y-E-R-S, date of birth 11/25/1978. I worked as an over-the-road truck driver. I have no kids, no wife, no contact with friends. I haven't seen friends in, I can't remember when. Same with family. I have a vague idea where family may be. So I really don't have a house either. I have a very good job that I'm not working right now. And so I don't know if I'm in the right place. My address and my ID, most recent ID is in Los Angeles, previous Santa Monica. And I've been in Glendale the past about seven days because my vehicle's been at Starboard. So I stayed in a hotel while they repaired it. And so I figured if, where am I going to start other than where I'm at? So, when I was 13, my mom came to me and said, "There's some people that want to follow you around and see what you do." And I said, "What are they going to see?" She really did, she seemed to be struggling with to tell me or what to say. And to me, it sounded like nothing. So, 49 states, I'm 43 years old. They've been there pretty much every step of the way. I have this injury now, about two and a half months, I've been out of work. My work is waiting for me. And I didn't do this to myself. I woke up this way. I have a habit of waking up with injuries with no explanation as to how they happened. And so I know that people of Glendale have been involved in, I don't know if it's a program. I don't know what it is. 49 states, about every step of the way. And so I don't know where to go or what to do.
Well, Mr. Myers.
I can't even say everything that's been done. To me, it would be inappropriate.
Well, Mr. Myers, we appreciate you coming and having the courage to get up and share what you've gone through. And, you know, here in Glendale, we try to welcome everyone here, at least in these chambers, with open arms and open hearts. There's a gentleman in the back of the chamber that's standing there, wearing a tie. If you turn around, and I know your own crutches on, if you'll wave, he'll help you out. He's going to help you and direct you as to what we can do to make sure that you help get back up on your feet again.
I'm not worried about getting back up on my feet. I have a, well, I am. I'm not sure how you meant that exactly.
In terms of helping you find whatever help that you feel that you need.
Okay. So the, this program or whatever it may be, I don't know if you, perhaps you heard me, 49 states, citizens of the city of Glendale have been involved. And I, at the very least, what I'm looking for is awareness of everything that has happened. And so the first step in that direction for me would be establishing the fact of it. And so I can give you some names. I'm not sure if they're, Armenian names are difficult to say, and sometimes they use names that I think are maybe not their given name, like Art instead of Artak or something to that effect. But I can give you some names and numbers of some people who have, I've worked with who have been involved in this. I would ask that at least, I got to start somewhere. So for me, it would be, find out what it is.
I'm sorry? Okay. Well, Mr. Takhtalian can also help guide you. Unfortunately, at this portion of the meeting, we only limit individuals to three minutes. It's a public comment. So because the three minutes is up, Mr. Takhtalian and we'll be able to assist you. We'll take down any contact information we can that you're willing to share.
Okay.
And we'll work with you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much to staff. With that, Mr. Clerk, what is next?
Mayor, we have one person on the line.
Yes, let's go to the caller.
Monica Campagna. Monica, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead. You have three minutes, Monica.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say good evening to Mayor Kasakian, council members and staff, and I hope that the gentleman that just spoke will give some help from the great team at Assensio, or other staff at the city. I was just calling in today to thank the city for several things. I wanted to thank you with, really, gosh, congratulations to Mr. Imran and his team on this electrification bus grant. It's amazing and great job where the staff and doing all the prep work that I heard about, to get a parking deck built and planning that ahead and being ready to go. It's amazing. So great job on that. And I wanted to thank the Sustainability Commission for a wonderful newsletter this week, and hope to encourage other people to sign up for it, too. It really was very informative and had a great website, which I hope everyone knows about on saving water, called mysmartgarden.com/GlendaleCA. And that website is fabulous. It's got a lot of stuff about native plants and how to transform your garden to a more drought-tolerant landscape with plants. And I wanted to say that this week, if you didn't get to look at the Sustainability Commission, there were about 18 new inspiring applications from students around Glendale for that position of executive official member. There were two positions, which was amazing. They're great students, and I really was impressed personally with just the commitment that I saw in the applications. And I'm just really happy to see that and firing. And lastly, I wanted to say congratulations to GWP for the great work they've done in getting the water use reduced. I saw on the news tonight that Glendale is down about 12% from last June, and that's amazing. So I think everyone should be proud of themselves. And lastly, I just want to thank Mayor Kasakian and Councilmember Brotman for supporting that clean energy resolution that was brought forward tonight. That's it. Thank you so much. I look forward to watching this later.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for calling in. We appreciate it. Let's move to action items and go to 8B.
8B, Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association. On behalf of fire sworn managers, one, resolution approving and adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association. JMA Fire Sworn Managers commencing July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Two, resolution approving adopting classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the Glendale Management Association memorandum of understanding JMA exempt classifications.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't know if we, thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
All right. And we have a second. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian, Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Let's have item 8C read into the record as well.
8C, Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and Glendale Police Officers Association. And resolutions addressing the terms and conditions of said MOU and classifications and compensation of affected city employees. One, resolution approving and adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and Glendale Police Officers Association, commencing July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024. Two, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the Glendale Police Officers Association MOU. Three, resolution of provision in the sum of $1,405,456 to provide funding for the MOU agreement between the City of Glendale Police Officers Association for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
I'll move this item.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I have a brief comment.
Sure. Please, Councilmember Najarian?
So this is our contract with our Police Officers Association. It's a two-year contract. It's never easy sitting down with employees and staff members who are, most of the time, you're very good friends and perform such an important job for the city. But when you're hammering out a contract, you do have to be at arm's length. I do want to thank our human resources staff, city manager, and members of the GPOA board for coming together and working on resolving an agreement for your two-year compensation and salaries. Thank you very much. We appreciate the job that you do for us. And I'm very, I feel very safe when I come to Glendale after visiting other parts of this county. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments before we go to a vote? All right. Well, there's been a motion and a second. And again, thank you to all the staff for guiding council and the rest of us through these negotiations. And thank you to the staff, our city staff, both fire and police, for all the work that they do in keeping the city safe in a premier city. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian, Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. Thank you. Let's have the next item, 8D.
8D, City Attorney Regarding Renewal Excess Liability and Law Enforcement Liability Insurance for Fiscal Year 2022/2023. One, motion authorizing the annual renewal of excess liability and law enforcement liability insurance policies for the city's 2022/2023 fiscal year in an amount not to exceed $4,478,993. Two, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $1,218,921 for the annual renewal of the excess liability policy.
Mr. City Attorney, may we have a brief one-sentence explanation as to?
One sentence? Sure. We're requesting council approval for the excess coverage for the 22/23 fiscal year, both for general liability and law enforcement liability, in addition to a resolution appropriation for 1.21%. for $1.2 million.
Okay. And anything else that we should be aware of, or does anyone want to just move ahead with this motion?
I'll move it. And I'll second it.
With that, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian, Brockman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kusakian?
Yes. Thank you. Let's have 9A.
9A is a hearing, Public Works Regarding Approval of the Finals Engineers Report and Ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. Resolution approving the engineers' annual levy report for the City of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 2022 and 2023. Two, resolution ordering the levy and collection of the City of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 2022 and 2023.
Okay. Do we have any callers or anyone here to speak on this item?
Mayor, I do not have callers for any of these items. I do have a card submitted for the five-minute oral, that's all I have.
Okay. So seeing that there is no comments or callers for the public hearing, I will open and close the public hearing. And with that, barring any, does any council member have any questions? Because this is a routine item.
I'll move the item.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian, Brockman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kusakian?
Yes. With that, let's go to oral communications. Let's go to the caller for the five-minute portion.
Mayor, I have a card for number 12.
We do have a card as well, okay. So let's hear from the person in chambers first. Ramela Eragi. Please, come up. If I mispronounce your name, please correct me.
Yeah, Ramela Eragi.
Thank you.
So I'm a resident of Glendale, ladies and gentlemen of council members. I've been a city resident for 30 years. And of course, I have a problem with English language, but let be it. You can laugh, you can make comments, put a video on YouTube and laugh at it. So let be it. So you council members, you cannot imagine what we senior citizens, of course, I'm here talking about affordable housing. And you cannot imagine people like me, senior citizens, and people who cannot afford their rent. It's very hard to pay the rent that they cannot afford. So you council members are well off financially, and even you, your grandchildren, grandchildren, grand-grandchildren can never be worried about paying their rents. So most probably have apartment buildings. So, well, yeah, I'm very concerned about affordable housing. I'm a resident of the city of Glendale for 30 years. I'm a senior citizen, and still I'm seeking affordable housing. Of course, not only for myself, for every other senior citizen that cannot afford this affordable housing, the rent. So I've heard that it's going to be like 1,000 units of affordable housing to be, it's going to be built in the future, and it's going to be distributed through lottery system. And what is, I have a suggestion that maybe more of these units be, they're distributed to senior citizens like me, or people like me that have been resident of the city of Glendale for 30 years. So the thing that I object is in this lottery pool, so everybody comes in this pool, senior citizens, newcomers from, I don't know where, from where, and all these people come in this lottery system, and then still, we, like, people like me, us, senior citizens, and people like, they're living for city of Glendale for a long time, they have the same chance as the other people that just came in in that lottery system, in that lottery pool. So what I suggest that they're senior citizens and long-term residents be prioritized for in this lottery system, or more percentage of these people, percentage, more, like, more senior citizens be prioritized in this system, in this lottery system than other people who just came in that lottery pool. So with all that being said, so I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to attend this meeting, and I'm going to fight with all my power to fight for this cause, for this agenda. And actually, my colleagues are supposed to be here, but unfortunately, I don't know what happened to them, so to support, to support this cause. So in, so in the next meeting, I'm going to talk about other issues of cultural issues and in regards to affordable housing, and about people who are bullying their, bullying their way to get their hands on this affordable housing and lottery system. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eragi. And we have two callers.
So no questions?
We will not engage necessarily in a question and answer or discussion. If you'd like to have a separate discussion, I'd be more than happy to set up a time when we can speak. But right now, we have two other callers waiting to speak. Yes, let's go to the caller.
Edwin, you have five minutes. Edwin, go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. How's everybody doing today?
Good, thank you.
Good. I have good news and also a suggestion I'd like to share with you guys. The good news is that LA County has collected over 700,000 signatures to put the George Gaston recall on the ballot. That's the good news. The other thing I would like to ask you, Mayor Kusakian, is what's going on is that I've been hearing that there's been an increase in nonviolent burglaries of vehicles where these are like ducking by the car, opening door and stealing stuff. And a friend of mine was a victim of that. And what she told me was that your officers told her that because of George Gaston's policy, the only thing that your officers can do is write the suspect a citation and release him. So Mayor Kusakian, my question to you is, do you have the power to introduce an ordinance where your police department can impound a vehicle that was involved for 30 days? Because if Glendale police officers are just giving the suspects a citation and releasing on the spot, why not impound their vehicle for 30 days? That's what I'd like to see if you guys can do that in this city. And the Glendale Car Show is this weekend, which is good, and I'll be there Saturday on Brent for the Glendale Cruise Night. And one last thing is, if George Gaston gets recalled, we should all throw a party. And just real quick, I'm going to play a quick song real quick. Here, just let me play it real quick. This is a song we should play after George Gaston got recalled. (phone rings) No, no. Hey, 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 goodbye. That's it. Thank you.
All right. With, let's go to, let's go to the next caller. We, by the way, in terms of, well, I'll make a few comments afterwards.
I'd like Brad to come up to us at the cruise night and introduce himself.
Sure. Let's have the next caller, please.
Diane Martin? You have five minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, hello, my name's Diane Martin, and I was on hold for the special meeting and was hour and 19 minutes only to find out that I was not able to call in. But thank you very much for having me. And also, I am a sponsor of the fireworks and enjoy it every year, and I appreciate you acknowledging that. I'm calling in regarding Mountain Oaks. I realize that is a private meeting. I am a homeowner in Mountain Oaks, and I'm on the HOA. And I am, as an HOA member, we are also a part of the Freedom of Information Act. And so as that was on the docket today, we are very concerned in Mountain Oaks and have been left out of many communications despite attempts to find out information. And so I'm calling in as a HOA homeowner to inquire about what is going on and to seek any information that was an outcome of that meeting today.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Myers. I will allow...
Martin, Martin, thank you.
Ms. Martin, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I'm going to ask our city attorney to explain why, what was agendized, and I'm sure anytime if I lived in a neighborhood and I saw my neighborhood name on agenda item, I would be concerned and want to know what's happening. Unfortunately, it was a closed-session item, and I will ask the city attorney to briefly explain why that is.
Thank you, Mayor Kusakian. As you noted, the item pertaining to Mountain Oaks was on the closed-session agenda, and no decisions were made by the council. So as a result, we cannot, we cannot discuss or comment on or provide information pertaining to that closed session.
Is there anything else that we can tell them why it was on closed session? Like an explanation as to why an item would be on closed session?
I can just, I can just state that the purpose for the closed session was for the council to discuss the potential acquisition of that property, and I can't say anything more.
Okay, all right. So hopefully that, I know doesn't clear up all the fog, but it lets you know a little bit about where discussions are potentially headed. So we have no other callers. Let us close the oral communications portion of this meeting, and we will now go to, I guess, there's any, there's no new business?
There's no new business.
So we can now adjourn this meeting, and then we will reconvene in about five minutes for the special reorganization meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn in a second?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
So do we want to ask folks?